Very informative. We want to thank AEP for coming. And we're on to the next item on my agenda, which I have since buried.
Clean Committee?
The Clean Committee report, and that would be Muriel. Thank you. It's got a map on the back.
Well, that's what you drew.
I'm Muriel Grimm, and I'm representing the executive committees of Athens Neighborhood Associations. Before I actually start talking about the report, I just want to clarify a couple of things that not everyone may be familiar with. The structure of the Clean Project is that we have three groups. The first is the executive committees of the Neighborhood Associations, and they're basically the people kind of created the overall project and decided basically how it would operate. And one of the main things that we decided was that we wanted input from all of the various interests in the city. So we created and coordinated coordinating slash advisory group that's composed of members of the Athens City Administration, City Council, OU Administration, OU students, Neighborhood Associations, business people, landlords, and Chamber of Commerce, just about every possible interest that we could think of. Now, that group, the coordinating group, is charged with developing the operating structure of the Clean Project. And what they did was create a set of action teams. The action teams are focused on cleanup strategies, environment -- cleanup strategies, enforcement, publicity, and education. The basic work of the action teams is to work on ideas and activities that would -- concrete ideas and activities that would reduce litter. We have excellent communication among the groups. We've accomplished it by encouraging people to belong to two or more groups, and that way, at any time that any one particular group is meeting, there should be someone from another group who can input any information that's been going on in the other group, so they're not relying on just reports from each other. Now, the second thing that I'd like to clarify is regarding recommendations. There may be some recommendations here that disagree with Council's previous decisions. We would like to point out that since these recommendations have surfaced again, they probably indicate that there's an ongoing underlying set of problems that hasn't yet been fully addressed. So we hope that Council will examine these underlying problems and make the best decisions possible for moving toward litter control. My personal suggestion is that maybe if there are issues that people have sort of taken one side or another of, and how to solve things, how to solve a problem, maybe it would be better if these were delegated to some people, creative-thinking people who haven't addressed the issues or the problems before, and maybe they can come up with a third solution that addresses everybody's concerns. I have copies of the report. The report is divided into really two or maybe three parts. The first is a cover letter, an overview from the Neighborhood Association's executive committees. Then there is a summary with recommendations from the coordinating slash advisory group. And then finally included in that are the annual reports of the various action teams. I'd like -- oh, and then, yes, at the end, there is also, there are some comments from the Uptown Business Association. I'd like to point out, in the cover letter, in the last two paragraphs, something that we consider very important. We -- I'll read from those two paragraphs. "We have been very pleased with the cooperative attitude and dedication of everyone working on the Clean Project. Although there is a way to go before litter awareness and cleanliness will be uppermost in the minds of Athenians, we think we have taken a large first step in that direction. The Clean Project is an example of how a group of people with diverse interests can work together for the common good. It is a progressive step toward building a better community. We appreciate the support City Council has given to our efforts, and we look forward to achieving results during the coming year." Also, from the first, the cover letter, I would like to point out the recommendations of the Neighborhood Association executive committees. And basically, that's paragraph three. "After a year of consultation with members of the Clean Coordinating Advisory Group, the Clean Action Teams, members of the Athens Beautification Day Organizing Committee, and many citizens, we have come to the conclusion that the single most effective tool for achieving litter education, publicity, and cleanup strategies is code enforcement. Therefore, we recommend that the Athens City Council and the city administration quicken the process for hiring a litter control officer. And we are willing to help in any way that we possibly could help in creating the job descriptions or researching civil service tests that are necessary, exams that are necessary to get this officer on board. Our hope would be that the position could actually be filled by the start of the school year." Regarding the remainder of the report, the neighborhood, the coordinating slash advisory committee has identified three priorities. Their first is the same as ours, enforcement, and they ask for the quick hiring of the already-approved litter control officer. They also make some suggestions. They suggest putting some or all of the fines that are collected into a beautification fund for education and to create a litter problems hotline. They suggest paying for the officer with a dollar increase in the recycling fee. And they also suggest three revisions to code. The first would be fee structure adjustments, the second, fines for property owners, and the third, that bags not be allowed to be put out overnight. The second priority is accountability. There, they are suggesting that the university and the city administrations clearly tell students that respect and responsibility for the community are expected of them. And they also suggest perhaps putting a test into the curriculum for the civic responsibility classes. They maybe get tested on their knowledge of trash disposal and recycling as part of that class, which has now begun. The third priority is regarding the downtown business district, and they ask for a coordinated effort between the Uptown merchants and the city to clean sidewalks, windows, and trash containers. They ask for the revisiting of the issue of not having, or the issue of whether or not to have curbside trash pickup in the Uptown area or to have centralized locate One other set of recommendations, which is very important and gets kind of buried, I think it's on the last page of the report, is from the enforcement act -- yes, it is, from the enforcement action team. They suggested most of the stuff that, not all, but some of the stuff that I've already mentioned, but they also, and they talked about those in a little more detail, but in addition to that, they also made several other suggestions. One is that residents and businesses be responsible for litter in the city right-of-way that's next to their property. The second, that the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the Neighborhood Associations, and the university create standardized litter, anti-litter messages, and maybe publicize these messages, you know, I guess just sort of get things going into people's brains by constant repetition. They also suggest a small haul program for trash that is not removed within 48 hours after litter citation. They ask for consistent or standard container or bag system of disposal. They suggest maybe trying it just in a small area at first to see whether it works. And then lastly, they suggest countering what we're calling the negative psychology. We feel that broken curbs and peeling paint and things like that are conducive to people littering, and so they're asking for the enforcing of the laws that are meant to fix or create, fix these bad images and create instead some positive images that might help reduce litter. And basically, that's the, it's a fairly long report, but those are the parts that are recommendations for the City Council.
You didn't have time to go through it all, but what I find impressive is the reports from the various teams, the strategies team, publicity, education. They have lists of dozens of activities that they've already engaged in and are ongoing, and they list names and times and radio stations that they're on, and all kinds of actions that our citizens and administration are undertaking already toward this end. That's a very engaging part of the report right there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think that the action teams have worked very hard, and we'd love to have any more citizens who are concerned about litter. The action teams are basically anybody who's concerned about litter. Join us, and yes, whatever your ideas are, you can start working on them. My only, the only downside, I guess I see to this, is all of those things are going on, and yet Clean is definitely not a household work.
However, as you just, you just mentioned, you know, just repeating it often enough, hopefully, will get it into people's consciousness. And a lot of these actions are repeating the message in a lot of different venues.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? I know you all want to move on, but anyway, the recommendations then might relate to things that you might be interested in looking into more. As you mentioned, the other three teams really, at this point, don't have any recommendations. They're still working on those activities.
Yeah, I assume so. We can get back to you?
Oh, yes.
Are you going to continue, or is the Clean Committee disbanded?
Oh, no. The only ones that have, that consider themselves finished are the enforcement team, but they may very well have to reorganize if it comes time to oversee whether the enforcement ideas are actually happening. But at this point, they've done as much as they could. The rest of us are still working on it.
There was a question I have. In terms of standardizing, I think I forget where it was, in here. Standardizing the containers or the bags or size, is that what you mean, to keep it as? I think right now we have 30 gallons or so. Are you saying actually enforcing that, or just?
No, that was, I think, something the Council has talked about before.
Standardized containers.
Having actual standardized containers, the same containers or the bags. I know Mayor Abel was talking about possibly trying a bag system also. Yeah, that's that same concept.
Okay, I see. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for all the work and good ideas.
Actually, in the past, it was about a year ago, there was quite a bit of discussion about purchasing recycling bins for Uptown on Court Street, and I didn't read this in detail. Is that in there anywhere? And if not, is that something that might be considered as a goal? I mean, they do cost money, but as a goal to get those started?
Yeah, I remember hearing it talked about, but no, I haven't seen it.
Well, and what did happen was there was some consideration of that as a project from the Chamber of Commerce, and they found another project instead, and so it went by the wayside. But I think it's something that we need to kind of keep out there and see if there isn't some group that would sponsor it or that we can find a way to do that.
Right, yeah, we can certainly add that, catch you on the list.
Are you talking about a couple of years ago, I think Ray was putting various containers out there, recycling containers, I think he was doing a series of them.
He was experimenting, right. And then subsequently, there was a discussion with the Chamber. They had some designated money that they were looking for a project for, and it was one of the projects that they considered, but then they selected something else.
Okay. It's an idea.
Yes, yeah, definitely should get on the list somewhere.
Okay, thanks, Muriel. Anything else from here?
Thanks, Muriel. All right, next thing on my agenda is external service increases. Currently, we charge about a 10% surcharge on all external utility bills, water and sewer, and it will actually segue into my next or two after this. And last week, I was listening to the mayor and Gary talk, and I thought out of that came a recommendation. I asked Ray, maybe it's time to visit the relatively modest fee we charge, surcharge fee, and increase it from 10% to 20%. And perhaps even more. I think the other people have 1.5 in some cases, and I think it was in the context of some of the more recent things we've had, but certainly in view of our relatively stringent approach to this expansion, other than the planes, it will not represent a huge change in our receipts. And in the planes, we don't get tap fees, but we do have a ceiling, so it's kind of an exchange business going on with that. So we have a limited amount of water we designate for the planes, but we don't put tap fees.
So are you suggesting that this increase would apply to that water also?
Oh, definitely. It does. I mean, that's the proposal. Go to 120%. As I started on that path, I was saying only in a few cases would it represent a big change. Okay, and that would be the one.
Yeah. Okay. So the planes, when you say that they have a limit?
Yes.
How close are they to that limit, do you know?
They're consumption, there's a 12-month period is 120 million, and they're at 78.5 right now.
Okay, so they've got a ways to go.
Full 12 months.
I do have something for Ray. So that would be 20% on the base rate and on the gallonage charge.
Let me check.
Okay. Any problems with that? Plus, we're doing business. We'll come up with a subsequent one. Next thing is the fee for, I will have an ordinance to that effect, mending both, increasing the 10% charge on both the base charge and the gallonage. The next thing on my agenda is the fee for armory parking, and I went around and asked people how much they were paying, and they came up with $50 a month, and we're charging 30 right now, so I was wondering if the mayor could look at that and come back to me, and we could possibly do something in July.
Yeah, we had scheduled a rate increase and notified them that going to 40 in July, that was last January we did that. We can still look at that.
In our effort to collect money, make that site more profitable, both sides, once we get it fixed, I hope. But we rent it quarterly right now, and you know, I don't know how that works, but it seemed like it was a little low compared to what other people were charging on that end of town. So if you could come back to us with any kind of recommendations. The last thing on my agenda is a more complex one, and I don't know exactly how to deal with it. Do you have a question, Amy? Oh, we're going to charge $50, 115, 114.
I think it's actually fairly low, 50 a month is low. I don't know. I'd less hardly look for those numbers. I thought they were much higher in terms of parking in general.
$90.
Well, no, I mean, in general, other parking in that area.
Well, I asked around, and so, I mean, we're looking for input, so feel free to do it.
I'll ask around.
That's phase two of this, and you can tell the mayor. The last, what do you think? The last thing on my agenda is, actually, was occasioned by a phone call I got, and then I started asking questions. First of all, I got an email from a person who was helping somebody develop a house on Door Lane, and I thought, oh my goodness, I remember Door Lane. We were joking around when we named it, but it's a piece of property that goes up between the old Golden Hotel and the, and the, what do you call it, place where you, garages that you store your.
Mini storage unit.
Yeah, the Charis Storage Facility. Okay, there's a road that goes up to the subdivision up on the hill that Clint Hudson has, I believe. And then there's, the road goes off to the right, it's sort of an L. Okay, above that L, well, first of all, we have the punk house, which is there, but above that L, there's probably 30 acres on the hillside. And so visualize if it's Route 33 up at the top of the hill, then this hillside, actually, I can show you a really beautiful picture of somebody sitting up on that hill and looking over the river valley, and then it gets down to the golden property, which has been filled in a bit. And the person wrote to me and said that they'd like to be considered for water and sewer, and I was thinking, gee, how could that work? And then I started thinking about the way we sometimes divide property up, and so you could see hypothetically that they could sell off four plots going up the hillside with these long sort of L-shaped things and a 50-acre frontage off that lane, and then leave the last one, and then sell it to someone else and do the same thing again, so we could have a whole bunch of lots that go up this hillside that would circumvent the ordinance. Well, my response to the fellow was, oh, you'd have to be annexed, because that's what we say, there's, you know, they're contiguous and so on and so forth. And, you know, and then I said, well, jeez, I can't make that decision on my own, but I just was looking for some guidance. Would you be willing to consider such a thing? I mean, I haven't asked for a pressure reading, but could you imagine, you know, if they got up the hill, it would sort of be shades of something awful from the past, Graham Drive, where we had a proposal for a property that we couldn't maintain pressure on. You know, so, well, the sewer wouldn't be a problem, go right down the hill and into the well. But the water would be a problem maintaining the pressure. Pardon me for saying it that way. I think I'm stacking the deck, aren't I? So in any case, I mean, you know, it's standard practice to, you know, in the country for people to do that, and that's why it looks like it does, with houses facing in all directions. You know, it's a very scenic spot. It's beautiful. But, you know, should we recommend that before much discussion happens with respect to our utilities, that they consider annexation, so our hillside ordinance and our other interests are taken into account? Yes, sir.
The last instance where this was discussed was Global Lane, I believe, where some people wanted city water and sewage, and we, I think we said yes, but they have to do have to annex. We'll do this, we'll be half annexed within a certain time, and if you don't.
You're going to pay 120?
We're going to jack up the price incrementally.
Right.
And so I think we almost have a precedent set there.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, we definitely have in our procedures that. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't out there by myself, you know, sort of shooting off my mouth on a reply, you know, and so you feel that there is a precedent that we would want annexation.
Regarding the utilities, and then, annexed or not, we would still have a say on the configuration of those lots, and that.
Well, if they do, why a subdivision? I'm sorry, but I don't think we have any say whatsoever unless they.
Because they can divide the lots.
With a 50-foot.
And then they divide.
Yeah, and then sell the last parcel to a new person who can divide it still further, and it starts to look like country time up in Knox County, you know, which is just a jumble of things. And I think the city's interests, especially on that hillside with the slope, would certainly be in having a more coordinated development, which probably won't appeal to the people who want to do it and be free of the encumbrances and so on. Yeah, that was my sort of, anyway, so I don't know exactly how they're planning to do it, but if you'd like to look at the road, Debbie was kind enough to give me a.
Oh, not bad.
Yeah. And the other one that comes to mind, and I was just going to ask the mayor, it's a very nice piece of property, but Circle Drive, that area between Circle Drive and across in front of Sears and Abdullah and whatever it is, Ministries and all the rest, out to the road, that's another example of this, where they sort of put in a road that didn't meet standards. Has that road been upgraded yet?
No, it hasn't been. It was to go to a temporary cul-de-sac, and then as the fifth one was built, and there was a more permanent one done, but it hasn't met standards yet, is my recollection. But there are also discussions with the property owner of the last lot that's 35 acres.
That they're going to use now, I guess.
That they now want to use, or at least talking about it, is trying to improve Circle Drive and bring it back up to city standards, which would lead to developers' costs, of course.
And that cul-de-sac in front of Sears and Abbey Carpet and all the rest would also be improved or brought up to standards?
That would be the idea, is to do that. I think the road itself is pretty well the standard. It's the cul-de-sac at the end.
Well, see, that's another example of it, where they went in, you know, put down a road, took off a bunch of lots, and said, oh, well, there's the fifth lot, and sold to someone else, and then they start dividing it further. Well, they can do it out in the country, but in the city, it starts to be an issue. So I'm not on, I'm on relatively stable ground then on this. Do you want to see this afterwards?
It's essentially the same thing we're talking about, the power system here. You just keep adding on things without.
Without any, yeah.
Watching it, its entirety. So where's the water, where's most of the water pressure come from under, where's the standpipe on that? Is that, is there?
It's going to be from Island or else Stroud's, I imagine. And they have the pump that goes out to the plains. I don't know.
I just want to.
We'd have to check on it. I didn't even check it because I wasn't certain. It's got to go up to that Oaks, those apartments up there.
Yeah.
And they're on city water and sewer.
I was just wondering how pressure.
We asked Ray if we were charging the surcharge, and I hope we are. Good? Okay. So there's some already up there. They've got to have, I don't know what the implication would be, bleeding off still others. And if it's all a bunch of laterals, you know, if it's a whole bunch of two-inch lines, then it really could be a problem.
The pressure in that area is probably pretty good, because the main line going to the plains and the pump station right in front of the Athens Paint and Decorating and the.
At least when they're, when the pumps are.
And we're in the process of replacing that punk house, probably next year, because we have ARC grant on it. So I would think pressure would not be a problem if the adequacy of the lines is there.
It goes all the way up, the property goes all the way up to Peach Ridge.
Wow, that's, it's pretty steep through there, and so it may not be able to do it all, but.
The hillside ordinance would probably be a good thing.
There are ways, it's just like when Mr. Lovell built the house on top of the hill.
Yes.
I mean, what's there is we can get the water, but not at adequate pressure, so there's a smaller retainer, I guess, almost like a tank there that then creates a little bit better pressure for them to meet the standards. That's something he had to install in that particular house.
Did we install it?
They installed it. They installed the line and everything.
I don't, I didn't know I was on Council.
We were on the Council, and it was a long time ago. Then we had that Graham line extension. Okay. Do you remember, Jim?
Yeah.
All right, so we go on and on. Actually, I know.
Any miscellaneous?
No, I have no miscellaneous. Let's go on to the next one. Amy? I had people call me, they were really angry about the street closing this weekend.
Yeah.
And about so many spaces not being available. Can you do something about it, please, by next month?
Street closing is.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the proposed street closing for the Ohio University pep rally, of which Mr. Barnhart, who's here again this evening from Campus Life, spoke to Council about that during our last committee meetings, of which I was not present. However, after looking at the committee minutes and the concerns of Council and the mayor, I met with Mr. Barnhart, we addressed some of those, and he's here today to talk to us further about the street closing proposal. And I'm going to pass around the outline, if you could take a look at it as well. This is the proposal for the street closing, which includes the timeline and also the proposal for the street closing, which includes the businesses and the closing times, because I know that the local merchants and how they felt about the street closing was a concern to Council. So, Mr. Barnhart?
Thank you. Two weeks ago when we met, I had initiated a discussion about street closing on East Union Street between Court Street and College Street, and there were a number of concerns addressed by both Council and local business owners, and so I wanted to take a moment to address those. And so we took a lot of the feedback that we received, and there was tremendous concern about the original time of the street closing, which was 4 o'clock. After looking at the times that many local businesses would close during opening weekend, After looking at the times that many local businesses would close during opening weekend, we found that if we moved the street closing to seven P M., that that could accommodate traffic in those areas and could accommodate those local businesses, many of which would be closed during that time, some of which would be open, some restaurants would still remain open, some taverns would be open as well. And so we made the decision to move this to seven o'clock, and we can do a lot of the production aspects on the front steps of Baker Center. The purpose of closing down the street and not moving it to a different location was also a major concern. And I just wanna stress that by closing down the street, I think it presents a more significant event, which I would suggest is why Palmer Street is not closed during Palmer Fest, and those sort of street closings aren't so closed during those times. So it's not to draw attention, but like many other events that receive street closings, International Street Fair, the Artisans Mall that occurs once a month, those, we wanna make significant events, and so this is, the location of this is crucial. And we were hearing from students that they want to explore Uptown, that they're interested in seeing what Uptown is all about. And so we're trying to place a program that is in their line of traffic. So if we know that those first and second-year students, of which are seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, are interested in exploring this area, we want to highlight areas that they could, or businesses and areas that they could engage in legal activity and explore places that would be open in the Uptown area. There were five major concerns also from council during the committee meeting two weeks ago, one of which was the way the university terrace would flow, and by changing the time to seven P M., this would flow in both directions. So a one-way street wouldn't be a concern. There was a concern about sororities and fraternities on College Street, there are three sorority houses that are located there. I've talked to Michael Sprinkle, who's the Assistant Director for Greek Life, and he has assured me that those women will be moving in at the latest by Thursday, because sorority recruitment has been moved up a few weeks. And so those women should be in by Thursday. The Fiji House men will continue to trickle in, but Void Hall should be, those who are moving in should be moved in by six P M., seven P M. at the latest on that Friday. It was asked that I present a proposal, and that's what you see before you, also a map of the street that's gonna be closed. And again, with the local businesses, I spoke with Josh Thomas at Brenham's and the Uptown Business Association, he certainly expressed concern about the four P M. time, and so that was also another major factor in moving it to seven o'clock. There's also a listing of the businesses you'll find there, I believe on the fourth page. And those are the businesses that are located on Court Street, between President Street and Washington, and on Union Street, on West Union Street, right there between Congress and Court Street. And so those are the businesses that would be affected. I spoke with, I spoke today again with, with College Bookstore and also with a little professor to make sure of their hours and to confirm those. I wasn't sure about their Friday night hours, but said they might be open a few hours later, which would indicate seven P M. closing time.
Other questions for the...
I wasn't here for the last one, I did catch a recording of it. So this thing will go till eleven o'clock, it looks like, right? The band, second band starts up at eleven?
That's right. So we're looking at this actual street being closed from seven P M. to give us a two-hour window for production, begin at nine P M. and then go until midnight.
And you, you said you talked to some of the business owners, and I think if I was cat reading, listening to the D V. correctly, really the intent of this is actually to get the freshmen in, not as a pep rally, but also them to get familiar with the Uptown.
Sure, and so, go ahead.
Okay, so has it been, have you been addressing some of the businesses that might want to entice these freshmen up there, besides the bars, I mean?
The last Athens Uptown Business Association, it was, I believe, a day or two after I addressed the committee, and so I did not attend that meeting because at the time we were going for four o'clock street closure, but that's certainly an intent to encourage them to be a part of this and to come up and have a booth or whatever they're interested. There's a way that we can work to steer first and second-year students towards those businesses. We'd certainly look to do that, and I think that's sort of a, I see that as more of a collaborative effort between us and Uptown Business Association.
Okay. And so you just actually start putting stages up at nine o'clock, that's actually on the stairs, I assume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's correct. And everything else starts clearing out around two, and then a street gets actually closed would be seven. So you're actually giving yourself a four hours there?
Five hours to do.
Okay.
Debbie, did you have a question?
I actually wanted to ask the mayor, when this came up a couple of weeks ago, you had some serious concerns about traffic flow, and I wanted to hear your response to these changes.
No, the changes are positive to it, it helps, it helps it because I think, as Amy and I have talked and read, I mean, we still have a moving problem uptown, because we have all the merchants and you have probably fifteen hundred-plus students outside of Bromley Hall and Void Hall moving in the same basic weekend. And usually they would be circling the block waiting for that, and I've even seen maintenance people at work at a couple of the different rentals uptown that basically, as their clients, one of them gets done, they don't move out and they hold that parking space for the next tenant to move in. And that's another thing we can talk about, that Amy and I have talked about, is to, can we try to do something to help speed that process up on another day? But I think most of the, I mean, I wanna take it to staff meeting, see if they see anything. I mean, it's up to you. Because I think most of my concerns have been addressed.
Couple things, one is that, the way I understand this probably won't be a repeat because the student center, new student center will eventually open, is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think this is where I'm supposed to mention I might have conflict of interest since I work for the university, but I say that only in jest.
Depends who's pushing, doesn't it?
All in all, I have really no problem with it, as long as logistics work out with the administration.
And we're certainly more than well to work with the city in any way to make this as easy as possible.
Are there any other questions from council?
I did notice that it said something about City of Athens would drop off appropriate street closure materials at Baker Center, and from that point on, your people would take over those duties and...
We could make sure they're placed appropriately, and then we could...
Return animals.
Return them to Athens Police Department or whatever is the easiest.
And so, again, I assume, as the mayor said, he's gonna take this to staff meeting and those kind of details would be hashed out, and I applaud your efforts to address our concerns and the administration's concerns, and if the mayor's getting more comfortable with this, then I probably am too.
Paul?
So when you say that you, we drop off the barricades and you actually put manpower there, so you're gonna have the O E. police there? Because I assume that the Union Street probably is gonna be open so they can make the turn. I think that was discussed last time, right?
They would not be able to make a turn.
Oh, not at all?
Because that portion would be closed. It would be open to vendors, but it would not be open to, through traffic.
Through traffic from college to Union is gonna be totally closed.
Correct.
Okay.
And so we would, excuse me, whatever barricades would need to be placed, or whatever signs would need to be placed, we can do that.
Okay.
So we need to be able to make a right turn on President Street, we need to have Mulberry open then, in order to make that circuit to get in there, otherwise it's going to be a nightmare.
That's one, yeah, one consideration would be a total flow of the traffic we anticipate. That's up to the city in one sense, but really, it needs to be thought out, I think.
Well, you know, if you're coming up the hill, you're not gonna be able to get back into that area unless you have either Mulberry or President Street right around and back up through the terrace.
You wouldn't be able to turn around unless you go into...
Where are you trying to go? Any of those dorms or frat and sorority houses along Terrace? East Green in general? I mean, you're gonna have to...
Hudson Health Center.
Right now, that intersection is pretty well still closed.
That's what I was asking.
Last I looked. But there are some discussions with other people within the university as to how are we gonna route traffic? We wanna have Mulberry open at this point in time of getting in, but I don't know exactly what the situation will be on President making the right-hand turn, but one of the things you have to do when you stop traffic to make the right-hand turn from Court on to East Union is you have to barricade off that lane of traffic or you get people trapped over there, which in some ways helps the parking problem. Yeah, well, put up some temporary, you know, barricades that often allow some people to park there that are unloading to go into some of the apartments above on the West Union Street, et cetera.
People's street, as you said last week, I mean, both South Court and Mulberry and the whole thing, and I just think it's really important that we remember that.
Well, when you're going down to college, you can turn left on Union Street.
You could come in that way, but the typical way would be from the bypass.
But you can come up Court Street, you can come up Richland and Court Street.
Can't right now.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you've got some dish issues there.
You would correct have to come up Richland to President, make a left onto Court Street, go down to Washington.
Let's see, I mean, that's...
Take a right on Washington, take a right on College, and take a left on Union, take a right on University Terrace.
If Mulberry's not open, we need really, really good signage.
Well, I think that parents, you know, having been through it three times, I just can't see putting parents through that kind of nuisance, so make sure the President and Mulberry are both open.
President will be open.
Yeah. I mean, for a right-hand turn, so people who overshoot can get through to the other side, I mean, that's just that simple.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused here. The intersection on Union and College is open or closed?
The intersection is open, so you can make a left-hand turn.
From College to Union?
To East Union.
To East Union, okay, but not a right-hand turn.
That's correct.
And going down Union, you could probably make a turn down to College. It's both ways or it's gonna be right?
Yes, if you were headed from University Terrace...
Okay.
To College, you could make a right-hand turn.
Okay, I just wanted to know that, I was unclear on that. Other thing, I, we just did noise ordinance that stops everything at ten o'clock, do we need to do something about that too?
No, it doesn't.
It's the weekend, so...
It's a weekend?
It's Friday.
And that time ends when?
Midnight.
Midnight, okay, so midnight is pumping this turn, okay.
As long as they stopped promptly at midnight.
Hold the plug, until they catch up with them, right?
Are there any other questions?
Let me just amend what I said, that you see from the discussion on this side of the room that our traffic concerns on that weekend are wider than just college, just Union Street and College Street, so...
You'll see a pact up on Six Eighty-Two.
Yeah, so, I mean, seriously, involving university police force and looking at that whole situation is probably a good idea.
And it's also my understanding, I believe, that there's a new committee between the university and the city to address major events or related activities, is that correct?
It's me.
It's in its formations, it's first meeting, it's...
And so maybe this is something we could also bring up at that as well.
Are there any other questions for the proposed street closing?
Are we gonna have it up on the tenth?
Yeah, that's what, that was the plan for, to call a special session and to have it up for a reading on the tenth, which we'll have to suspend.
We're not gonna suspend, are we on the tenth?
No.
We don't need to suspend.
Why, are we gonna have another regular?
Yeah, we're gonna have three, three more meetings after that.
Dozens of them.
How many more? We told them to tell all this, the mayor will find seven or eight different things that have to get passed in July.
No, well, okay, well, then we won't be...
We're holding for our car.
No, I mean, which is stuff we have to do.
I would not advise suspending first reading either, just so somebody out there hears about it.
I was on the, I'm sorry, I thought that we, that would be our last meeting before our recess. So then I'll put it up for first reading, because I will need a special session if people can be here on the tenth for the King Midget Car Club. And then the seventeenth will, okay, on the tenth we'll read it, and then on the seventeenth we'll see where we are.
That's second reading.
Fair enough, that's second reading, which I may suspend.
You need the votes, Kate.
And Rick, you're gonna see what the, police and fire...
And then I'll be in touch with mayor on this, after the staff meeting and logistics.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have a few miscellaneous items. As the mayor mentioned, I met with Mr. Hazlitt last week, and he told me that he was in communication with other council members, I'm not sure who, possibly about declaring the Sunday before school starts move-in day for the Uptown area, that it was discussed maybe in bagging all of the meters that are uptown and declaring those zones as loading and unloading only. Just wondering how council felt about that or sort of some feedback on declaring that Sunday move-in day, whereas we would bag all the meters and we would have to have, obviously, the administration sort of patrolling that area, and if people are just parking their cars, kindly ask them to move so others can move in to load or unload.
Makes sense.
To move in on Sunday, the Uptown area.
What, the whole Uptown area?
I think that we would just, Court Street would be Court Street and maybe some of those adjacent streets, depending on what people thought to bag those meters, because people do, you know, live on the Union Street, Washington Street, some of those...
Orange Street.
Right, Court Street.
Well, the advantage of doing it on Sunday is that the parking garage is there and it's free, there's no charges that day, so that therefore those that wanna come up and do any shopping or to go to church will have a place to be and park, I'm pretty sure. But we're just concerned that people keep circling the block, waiting for the spot, and maybe we could give it a try and see how it works.
Just anecdotally, one time on a move-out or move-in, some move-day, we had an art market, and so Union Street was closed between Court and High Street, or whichever that is.
Congress moved in.
Congress. And it was great for the people moving in, because what we did is we just moved to one side of the street, all of the meters were bagged, and so they did, they had exactly this situation, they loved it, it was excellent, and they got in, got moved, came back out and got out of the way, it really was very effective. And it just sort of happened that way.
Debbie?
The, I guess the only caution I would have is that we check with the Uptown Business Association. I would imagine that during those move-in weekends, it's probably important for a lot of them in terms of business and figure out if there's a way to communicate with people if the meters are bagged, that once you're done moving, the parking garage is free and go out for lunch afterward or something.
Sure.
You'd have to have some staff in the area, and we work with the apartment borrowers and the others to do it. Maybe we could make the arts on one side of the street, the parking on the other.
It might be that the arts is on move-in.
But that's something I just wanna tell you, I gotta get some feedback on, I think we can, because it's the Sunday, it's not closing the street, I don't really need to make the ordinance and everything, but enjoy the feedback.
What day is it, who are you talking about?
Sunday.
Sunday?
Before Labor Day, the, it would be the...
That would be the third, right? Yeah, okay, so we're talking about, this is...
Avoid downtown.
So this was Friday, September first, and on Sunday, this is September third, we're talking about bagging the meters.
Bagging meters, not closing the streets.
The street would be open, but we have to, we have to have our meter people out there, or who's gonna be out there making sure people actually load and unload?
You. The transportation every minute was very important.
No, but I think part of that's gonna be taken care of by the rental property owners on Court Street and the other streets, because those are the ones that are gonna have the most benefit from it in addition to the tenants moving in. So we would try to contact them and see if we can get some manpower assistance from them.
Is this where they get a chance to sign that lease agreement?
Yeah, we could do that too.
Yeah.
We could have a booth for that.
Booth, okay. Okay, that sounds good.
All right, next item, which is the reason why I would like to request a special session on next July 10th. I will need to amend the times for the King Midget Car Club street closing. I think currently they're set from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. I'm not entirely sure, I couldn't find my ordinance before we came in here, but we're going to need to change it from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to allow them time to set up and tear down. Any questions about that, slight change in the street closing? Also, on that same note, I've been in communication with Linda Hart from the Bureau about the King Midget Car Club is wanting to erect a wooden three-by-five sign at one of the entry points into the city, and I just guess I want some more feedback from council on how they feel about that. I know that there were some issues raised about them maintaining the sign, what kind of sign, and it is a wooden sign. They, I talked to them about who will maintain the sign, they assured me that they will maintain the sign. And so I'm just wanting some more feedback from council on, you know, if, you know, if they were to go through and through the code office and get the permit or vocable license, as far as council would have a problem with them putting the King Midget, home of the King Midget Car sign in a city right-of-way.
One or several?
One, I think.
One. One is, one, you know, either at possibly the Columbus Road entrance. I wouldn't, they, they mentioned the East State Street down, out by the Pepsi plant. I know we don't have an entry sign there yet, but I know that it might be a good location.
Could they come to us with a proposal with the appearance of the sign, so we know what we're...
They did, they gave us a photo.
I did, I sent that out over email, but I can certainly, I mean, have them come here and bring a bigger picture of it.
But there are standards, I mean, there are standards for this type of sign.
Yeah, so I assure you, I went through and read the entire 18 pages of the sign.
How lovely.
Yeah.
Now the rest of us will have to do it.
Right, so I went, I went through and just kind of looked at some of the things that might pose a problem for said sign. And the only things really were just, you know, whether or not it's going to be approved, you know, by the code office, you know, it's not permitted in certain zoning areas. And I think I read it correctly that it would be a freestanding sign, is that right? I mean, it didn't fall underneath any of the other ones. And it would be a three-by-five sign, which it couldn't be higher than six feet. I'm just reading the regulations, so it wouldn't be higher than six feet, obviously. They need to fill out an application. They wanted to give it to the city as a gift, so I'm not sure what are the regulations.
But if we own it.
Right. So, but they, they did assure me that they wanted to maintain the sign, this is something that, you know, is important to this club, you know, considering this is, this is the home of the King Midget Car. So just wanted to know how council felt about something like that.
I would like for them to come and do a presentation.
Okay.
Come and do. Might want to send out the attachment of...
Send it out again.
Yeah, just so everybody has it. I remember seeing it, and again, the concern was where to put it in the maintenance at the time.
I did get some feedback from some members of council.
I, one idea to think about is can it be part of the, by the entrance sign, the place where there's a big thing with the different clubs?
In the wheel? In the grinder?
Grind wheel? What's their, right, yeah, well, there is one on State Street, that's true.
And there's one on Richland?
I don't know if that would necessarily be a, a good location.
And there's also one on the...
But there are places that there already are signs instead of...
Right, instead of creating a sign, maybe just throw in that. Okay, well, I'll get back to Linda then and let her know that council would like the King Car Club Midget Committee to come, to come in, oh, King Midget, the Midget Car. Have them come and make a presentation. So I'll talk to them, and that'll be on committee meeting for the 10th event, and maybe an hour and a half presentation.
Roll it over, AP follow.
Yeah. Okay. One more thing, it's about Stewart Street sidewalks.
Okay.
I talked to Ray, again, in my meeting with Ray, and he said that he's going to get me a rough estimate on what it would cost, engineering cost
Okay.
for the project, so I'm going to wait and hear back from him. Just wanted to let you know that, you know, still working on it, as far as getting some things put together for Stewart Street. And that's it. Does anybody have any miscellaneous?
Amy, I was serious about the people who called me on Saturday and said they were about one-seventh of their business, and that there were no people on the street, and they were pretty irate. And so with, that was the drive-in, cruise-in. Cruise-in, and I guess it broke up by 4:00. I was going to check them out, so I drove uptown, it was pretty much gone by then.
And was, it was supposed to be closed till 7:00 or something?
Yeah, I think it was, you know, the promotional part was a little bit lacking.
Okay.
And the business owners up there have, you know, have a point. There are a couple that usually will call me and jump up and down, and they were especially irate at this one, because they're, I think we had more people up there working for the city than anyone else.
Right. Um, I know that Friday isn't the usual day that they do the cruise, and then it's more of a Saturday thing, and I think that that might attract more people. This is something that they were trying this Friday, so I think in knowing that they had to shut down early, that it possibly, no, it was a Friday.
It was Friday, and it was closed on Saturday too. It looked like somebody ruled up the streets in Athens, actually, that morning. We're in pretty many people, I'm about...
Was it for Saturday? I don't have it in front of me. Okay, well, I'll get back to Bill and let him know, and that may be to do...
Tell him he has to either ramp up the participation or, and they had parking meter bags over the whole area north along West Washington, and people who would, you know, would maybe walk down that street to work, really didn't have a place to, I mean, to go to a shop, didn't have a place to go or park. Probably totally unnecessary, looking at the level of attendance.
Okay.
Zeal is one.
I'll get back to them and let them know and see what we can do in terms of if we're going to grant those street closings, what they can do in order to ramp up the participation. Any other miscellaneous items, mayor?
The, we, I'd mentioned before that we're going to have a couple of different easements associated with the Mill Street Village Apartments, or whatever they want to call it now, because we just received the one on running the fiber optic, a 10-foot easement on Mill Street, just down from where the railroad crossing is, or was at one time. And there still will be one for power, and they're checking on that for me, if we get to one and not the other. But that will be coming to you at some point in time. If one is ready, the other one, rather run both at the same time and get it all done. So if the other one's not too far behind, I'll, I'll get both of that heavy data on that.
Actually, we should be finishing. The only thing, we covered the trees with the AP. The solid waste aspect, I think I saw an email, since I didn't attend this last one on solid waste, was the idea of franchises, and that it was within our purview. Let's see, what was it? Section 050208F, that the service safety director shall have the authority with the advice of the Center of City Council approve or disapprove transfer of licenses, as well as any change in licenses. In other words, if we put a resolution forward saying we want to decrease the amount of franchises, we can do that by resolution. I'll look into it and talk to Ray about it and see what he thinks.
I mean, a good idea. The mayor had a really good idea about if one gobbles up another one, then the license is gone with the gobble.
So we decrease the amount of franchises from five down to... Okay. So that's the only thing I wanted to bring up, so I was at least on the same page as you guys, since I didn't make it to the last meeting. Other than that, I have no miscellaneous. Anybody have miscellaneous in the environment committee? They were done.